I'm calling the regular session of Dune City Council Wednesday, June 21st into session at 6:00 PM. And I'd like a roll call in just a moment.
Mayor Sheldon Meyer?
Present.
Councillor Rich Olson?
Present.
Councillor Robert Owen?
Here.
Councillor Melissa Stinson?
Present.
Councillor Rory Hammond?
Here.
All right. Tom Mallon's excused?
I don't know if Tom Mallon is absent or not because I don't get those emails. Jamie does.
So for the record, are we marking that Councillor Mallon and Councillor Snow are not present?
Yeah.
We were wondering if you could speak just a little louder and get your mics, but a few people were bothering here.
My apologies. I was just requesting that Councillor Mallon and Councillor Snow were marked absent from today.
Thank you.
I'm going to move that we go into executive session. We do not have our city recorder manager here tonight. And I need to have some input from my council to decide where we go and what we're going to do. So at this point, I'm calling for a executive council meeting. You'll be back as soon as possible.
Sheldon, Mr. Mayor Meyer, would you please state the time for the record?
At 6:03 right now.
Thank you.
I'd like to have you all stand with the pleasurable.
That's the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. What we have decided as a city council...
Need to call it back to order.
I'm calling back to order at 6:25. What we've decided as a council is that we will not be doing any business tonight. But I would like to give each and every one of you an opportunity to express your concerns and why you are here. And I would like to limit that to three minutes per person because there's a lot of minutes out there. And you are Dune City. Each and every one of you represents Dune City. And we need to know what you want to know, what you want us to hear, and where you want us to go. So I would like to open that to... Do we have a list?
Yes. Has everybody who's here signed in?
Is everyone signed in virtually?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll call you from the top of the sheet. And please try and limit it to three minutes so I don't have to break the gavel.
Excuse me, Mayor, well, the letters that people sent in to be read at this meeting can be read?
We will read those after we hear the meeting. Rex Quamler.
Nothing.
Ask. That's what he wanted to say.
Well, he needs to speak. If you give your name, address, then you're saying...
It's all, he did all that. He signed in. You were asked...
For the record.
For the record.
So Mayor Meyer?
The sign-in is just so we have a list of all of them.
Hold it up.
It's nine years old.
Well, they're here in protest of passing this massive ordinance.
So you have to speak if you want to give themselves who you are, your address, so for the record.
Well, some people are shy to talk, or listen.
Well, why don't you start and we'll get people started.
Okay. That's their opinion. That's why they're here.
So are you going to speak?
No.
Could someone read what he wanted us to hear?
Yeah. A lot of people are here in opposition of the Dune City Ordinance 259 you're trying to pass without public input, without proper public input. And the procedure of the last meeting was not proper. And a lot of us are concerned about our rights here in Dune City.
Can your name and address, please, for the record?
Well, I think I signed up...
You spoke, so what?
Okay. Yeah. I am Jeanne Jackson. I'm the same person you didn't allow to talk last time. Despite my following proper procedure. You never allowed me to speak. You cut me off, and so did Ms. Mills. And I think it was very unfair that all of the gentlemen who were here, and they had every right to speak lengthy periods of time. I'm glad that they spoke, but I also deserve the right to talk. I think you and Administrator Mills didn't want to hear from me because you didn't like my message. And you know, we, part of the country we live in is we all have a right to express our opinions. I have the freedom of speech, and I felt totally stifled. You didn't allow me to talk saying, "We've heard from everyone." Does that make me no one? Have I suddenly become no one? Because you said, "We've heard from everyone." Well, you didn't hear from me, and I had signed on the list to speak. I felt dismissed. And later, maybe what occurred between Ms. Mills and I was the fact that you both had, very rudely, I thought, cut me off. And I wanted to start talking about how we, people from Westlake, get treated and from Dune City. That's why so many of these people are here tonight finally came because they're tired of not being heard and being dismissed. And it doesn't matter, you know, I've come to many meetings through my life. Never once has anybody been moved by anything I said. And I, you know, I'm tired of not being heard. And you have to understand, you're in real trouble in this community. There are so many people who just want you gone at this point. And I'm sure you're not happy to hear that, and that's probably why you didn't call on me. You and, you know, Administrator Mills, read my views from previous meetings when I attended meetings almost two years ago when you started this whole process. And I was cut off then, too. I was told at planning meetings I couldn't talk. When Jeanne and I raised our hands before they rushed to a vote and said, "May we speak?" They said, "No." And you know what? I'm going to tell you this because I don't know if all of you know this. But you know that night when Administrator Mills was there at that planning commission meeting, and this was the one that occurred in, I believe it was November? No, it was December of 2021, when she insisted on a vote. It was 9:30 at night, just like last month when we had such a long meeting, almost three hours we all sat through patiently. And I heard, she said to the people, who, all the councillors, every person on the planning committee said they'd like more time to work on it. It was very complicated. They had a lot of things they thought could be worded better. They wanted to fix it. And she said, "Well, I don't care if you have to stay here till midnight," because someone had complained of the lateness of hour. It was 9:30. She said, "I don't care if you have to stay here till midnight. You're going to pass this." That so offended my sister and I, who had dutifully come to the meeting and tried to participate and give some citizen input that you say you all want to hear, but you certainly didn't want to hear our message. You wanted to pass this ordinance. And I, especially Ms. Mills did. It was her baby. It's what she did the whole time during COVID. She spent hours, when she said, "Hours were spent," and how many years you've spent, yeah. And that's, we paid her $21 an hour to do that during COVID, and no one asked her to do that. And I was, this thing is as thick as, my dad would say, a Sears &amp; Roebuck catalog. And I brought it as a prop to just say, "You're saying this is just a little updating? This is so much more than that." And my sister and I were not allowed to speak ever more than two minutes back then. I thank you for saying three now, but I certainly wasn't allowed to speak the length of the time the gentlemen were at the last meeting. I thought they all brought up excellent points, but you denied me the right to speak. And if you thought I rudely butted in towards the end of the meeting, it's because I was quite offended when she started on about, you know, "Well, we won't be doing this or that, or grandfather houses, or what you can and can't do." And I said, "Excuse me, I mean, a mother-in-law houses are allowed by Lane County. They've always been allowed. Don't tell us we can't have them anymore." "Well, we're not Lane County," and she, I thought she was quite dismissive towards Lane County, towards those of us who had differences of opinion, who weren't allowed to express them. And she cut me off the vote. You did, too, because you said, "Everyone's spoken." You had the list. You knew I hadn't spoken. I know, I don't think you wanted to hear from me. And I'm sure Ms. Mills didn't want to hear from me because she has done everything she can to stifle me. But I'm not going to shut up. And all these people are here because they're upset at how they've been treated and not heard from. You know, and really, it's quite sad. We welcomed you here, let you use this city hall that my Uncle Bob, who had been mayor of Westlake, said it would be so much more comfortable than your cold, damp, and moldy trailer over near the fire station on Clear Lake Road. And the thanks we did is you've taken us over. My Uncle Bob was part of, we had many attempts to secede, but one of them, my Uncle Bob actually joined in. He was so upset that the lies had been broken. You swore we'd always be Westlake. The petitioners said that. And some of them were from Westlake themselves. And they said, "Of course we'll always be Westlake. You think we'd do this if we weren't Westlake anymore?" They said, "Of course we'll still be..." The Reisenhoovers, someone was talking about Reisenhoovers earlier. They've lived here many years, just as our family has. And they were, it was Ray Reisenhoover, who's the petitioner, who showed up that night with his wife to our house. They're friends of ours. We've known them for years. And I felt like we were coerced into signing that. My poor father, who had five, a wife and five children to support and was working in the woods, he was threatened by his lawyers that if he didn't sign it, he may not have a job. And he was threatened by Ray Reisenhoover, who came around to our house, and you, yeah, he's one of your founders, yeah, right. But he said, "Well, you know, Fritz, you still owe me $239 on that saw, so if you'd like it back." So, I mean, I felt like my parents were literally blackmailed, and we have been treated badly ever since. So you can maybe understand, I'm sure every family here has a story like mine, and maybe understand part of why we're so upset.
I'd like to give these others a chance to tell their stories.
Thank you, Sheldon.
I could not see what was under on the sign. Is there a way that we can review that?
Can we have the sign that you read from, or read the verbiage out of it anyway?
Well, we weren't sure. You allowed people to bring in signs.
I just want to, but I can't see that far. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. It just is, a lot of people want to say no to this city ordinance you're trying to pass. And at least it needs to be broken up or voted on by everyone. And Chapter 155 has a lot of problems.
So it says, "No to Dune City Ordinance Number 259 and Chapter 155."
And many of the people here are against it. And you just, you know, you're not reading our letters yet, so maybe that will explain more.
Is that the same letter you have there, the same as yesterday?
Yeah. No, they all, all of these people are in opposition. Maybe not. I shouldn't speak for everyone. Maybe some of you are. No, I said, "I can't speak for everyone," but I know a lot of the people are. And the people, some of them are shy about...
Can we let some of the other people speak?
Certainly. I just said, "Thank you."
Thank you. Iva Robbins?
No, she spoke for me.
Okay. Steve Rockholtz?
Rockholtz?
Yes. All right. Rockholtz?
Yeah, I came to the meeting to get some information about the short-term vacation rentals. The sign went up next to me. I'm at 83492 Woodland Lane. And Vacasa put up a sign next door, and we never got any notice. And apparently, after talking, they didn't get a permit for this situation. So I wanted to find out what the rules are.
Well, we're not going to take any action on that tonight, but we will inform you when we know what the rules are going to be. Gail Nichols?
Gail Nichols, 83610 Clear Lake Road. I'm a Dune City Planning Commissioner. And I had submitted an email letter to the council in support of the ordinance.
Thank you. Charles Vang?
Charles Vang, 83474 Woodland Lane. I'm here to get information about the vacation rental issues. As my neighbor down the street, we were blindsided by having signs advertising companies that we have never heard of before with neighbors that have never spoken and let other people know that he had the intention of going through the rental process. So we need to know, understand that 300 feet away from the individual that's going to make application should be notified. But we're within the 300. We're next door. We think that we have a legitimate right to have some kind of comment on it. If you start looking at it, because we are familiar with what happens in other areas where this thing has gone crazy, where people have lost their values, where people have basically lost their quality of life, where people basically turn enemies of other neighbors because the neighbors don't take into consideration the community. So I just think that the process has got to be better than what it is where you find out from somebody else and see a sign that's up on the neighbor's property and finding out that they haven't even applied for a permit yet. So I'm just saying, there needs to be a process. And I also suggest that if some people really want to do this, they should give some kind of an input from their community, at least from their road, so that their road could actually be designated as a rental area. It's very bad for the lake. My concern about the lake is the sanitation. Looking online and seeing that there's some advertisement, 14 people can actually sleep in a residence. And the notification is that you can have 1.5 visitors during the course. That's 36 people that are going to be occupying the facility without the proper sanitation. So if you have 36 people and four toilets, what's going to happen? You're going to have a big problem. And if you get a failure in that situation, I worry about our lake.
Understood. Thank you. We're going to be working on that situation as well. And your input is invaluable in the development phases.
May I speak for just a moment?
Sure.
I just want to say that what we were doing and are doing is an attempt to prevent the kind of thing that you're concerned about. And it sounds to me, although we would need to get some more information, it sounds to me like the procedures that we put into place may not have been followed. So there needs to be some follow-up from the city on that. But please do understand that we are trying to prevent the taking over of our community by people from the outside and it become just a rental community. That's not what we want. So we will pursue that, as Mayor said, and see what more we can learn and follow up as to the better of our ability.
What kind of notification could we expect to get in this regard? And what kind of input could we give in liking it or not liking it? You know, I believe that people should have the right to lease their property if their neighbors are okay with it, you know? But I don't think that when you start allowing people to destroy other people's value, quality of life, and property values, that that's the way you, you better not look at it because I think you're opening yourself up to some real bad problems. We have enough problems in Dune City without having more of this crap.
Well, it sounds to me like, and you know, without knowing all the facts, it sounds to me like someone came in and decided without having gone through the process that we intended. So your telling us is exactly what we need to hear so that we can then follow up and see what happened and whether there was an approval process that was bypassed, and perhaps it wouldn't have been approved. But until we hear from you, if someone simply decides to put up a sign and rent something out, we don't know until someone tells us.
In another area that I'm very familiar with, there was an intake conflict between two groups of, basically, where they had, short-term rental was one desire and long-term rental, no rental, was the other. So the compromise was 31 days. If people wanted to rent for 31 days, a long-term rental thing, then it seemed to satisfy a lot of people because you didn't get this wrong group coming in every week. So I think that might be something that we head for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Vang?
Decline. She waves.
No, I decline. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
My mic is never, but he got waved.
I used up all her time.
I'm glad he did.
My name is Rapunzel Riverhalzer. I'm a Dune City resident. My address is P.O. Box 133 Westlake. And I've submitted multiple testimonies in favor of 259 and the changes to 155.
We're committed to our net?
We decline.
Okay. Both of you are?
Yes.
Joel Canting?
Riverman.
Riverman?
Riverman.
Riverman?
Yeah. So we're at 4948 Darling's Loop, and I'm on a piece of property that has been in our family since 1967. And the people that bought it are an LLC. And they immediately came over, introduced themselves, said they wanted to be good neighbors. I've never, ever in my life seen the garage next door, the walkway to the front door, the front door, the decks. They butchered everything. And our houses are not that far apart, and they can look right into our house now. And if I sit out on my deck, I see, we're from here to that wall from them. And it has been, they did have a license supposedly that got pulled. And I have been writing to Jamie Mill and discussing this with her now for, I don't know, not quite two years, maybe two years. And nothing's ever been done.
They never were granted a license?
Never. And they've continued to operate?
And I think they're pulling water out of the lake, and they don't have water rights either.
She's on this now. Pam is. But it's been really frustrating to come over, we vacation there, and were there a lot in the summer because my husband's still teaching in Eugene. And it is just not near as fun to be there anymore. When you're watching children sitting on rails of the deck where if they fall backwards, there's adults right there, fall backwards, they could die or be paralyzed. A family of four with two small children head out in a canoe, and four hours later, they're being brought back by, I think, one of Rich's barges. And I know with two kids that age, you don't plan on being gone that long. And it's just one thing after another that, living there, you can't help but notice, like, oh, my God. It's awful.
It is.
And the fact that we've had to watch that now for two years, almost, is very unnerving.
What was your name? Charles Vang. Charles? Yeah, to Charles' point, I think if some kind of change was made as to the length, the term of a rental, if it was like a permanent rental residence rather than, you know, a vacation rental, that would make a big difference, I think. There's no vested interest in these people that come in, you know, the turnstile just goes around and around and around.
This is a business.
There's no pride in ownership. They don't care. They come in and trash the place and move on. And meanwhile, we're residents. We're retired people. We're living here, and we're having to deal with that, so.
Yeah, I don't think they've ever had their septic system looked at, and it's probably pretty old. Their roof continues to drip mud. I mean, it just goes on and on. They cut a tree down, down by the lake, and there's rounds of tree in the lake, just waiting to be, you know, sent off to ruin someone else's property and dock. And it's, I don't know.
I know you guys don't have a big operation. I know that. But the enforcement side of things, that has to be dealt with, too, because there doesn't seem to be too much enforcement.
Yeah, we lived in Lincoln City for 15 years, and we live barely out of the city. And we didn't deal, there were a couple of vacation homes in our neighborhood that didn't really affect us. But when you talk to people in the swimming pool and at your place of employment, those that live next to them, it was awful. The garbage, the noise, the disrespect for the neighborhood. And I know that Jamie told us a couple of years ago that you guys were looking to Lincoln City as to get some guidance. And hopefully...
Lincoln City isn't the way, is the opposite of the direction you want to go.
It's awful. It's great for vacationers.
For tourism, yeah. It's great.
I have to apologize. I've been checking off and speaking. Your last name was?
Riverman.
Okay. Bob Shipley? I'm trying. I'm trying. Jeanne Jackson, are you still there?
I was wondering if the people who are declining, could they at least state what they came here for? You don't have to talk about it, but just what brought you to this meeting. That would be helpful.
They shouldn't come to speak if they should not be declining.
Okay. I just still babbled for them. They took the trouble to come.
John Barnett?
Yes, John Barnett, Dune City resident, 83447 Spruce Lane. Actually here to speak real briefly on behalf of Mr. Bassett and Mr. Bailey about an administrative decision that Jamie was talking about on a dedicated Dune City street, that they're looking at gaining access to their parcel. So nothing earth-shattering, just, so it's something that I know you guys have, she just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it prior to a decision being made on that. Yeah, so that's all I'm speaking to.
Paula Linda Roberts?
My name is Paul Roberts, 83487 Woodland Lane, and I'm here to observe and listen to the community's concerns.
Thank you for coming.
And I'm Linda Roberts, and I'm here regarding the Vacasa sign that was put up. And we have been to meetings prior, and we've gotten letters that have told us there's a $100 application fee. The permit has to be made. And we got one person that paid, and we've got three, whatever they are, vacation rentals already. And just concerned why we're not, you know, without a permit, how these people are allowed to do this, so. Well, it's a big concern because, you know, we live here full-time.
Understood. Thank you for coming and...
But I have a piece of good news for you. The one next door to us is shut down for now. So things are being taken care of. Thank you.
Tom Bassett?
I passed.
Some of you guys should probably just lock the doors, I do.
Perhaps reading the address?
Pam Bernie?
Bernie?
8336 Clear Lake?
Is it the name under Tom Bassett?
Yes.
Does it look like Rich Bailey? Okay. And that would be a decline to speak. Thank you.
PhD is showing in here.
You need a pharmacist on the board. Dan Martin?
Yeah, I'm new to Dune City. I'm at 83764 Clear Lake Road. I'm wondering if the agenda is to eliminate Airbnb or anything that's a vacation rental altogether, or whether it's case by case. And is this something that's just come up recently, or has this been ongoing for quite some time?
It's a relatively new phenomenon for the council. And I think we're sort of a switch in between in terms of individually what we think. I know that it's been stated a couple of times that we don't want it just to be a vacation rental city because it isn't exactly what we planned this to be. And so we're still in the process of trying to understand what Airbnb is all about and what kind of guidelines we need to come up with. And as you've been listening, we don't have that all together yet.
Look, Mayor, it isn't, I don't, he's old till time goes by fast. It isn't a new phenomenon. I think we've been talking about Airbnb's for at least three years. And we just passed the ordinance and with lots of changes and lots of meetings and things. And we're still seeing, the effects of it. The license was pulled for one and things like that. And we found that a lot of licenses were actually, that we get income from the vacation rentals, and a lot of it was going to Florence instead of here. So the licensing process is also a way for us to keep track of them. There's been talk about percentages and not having any, and it's an ongoing thing. It needs to be paid attention to and like... it needs to be paid attention to and like the mayor said, tweaked.
Well, I'm a proud property owner. I take care of my property and I, I can understand how people would be upset with people coming in and making a lot of noise and leaving their trash. I have thirty acres of land and I have a guest house that's been existing since nineteen seventy-four and I'm on the lake and part of me buying that property with that guest house was with the intention of having income. Now, I don't have neighbors. I think my only neighbor's Pam, I think she's in here somewhere. There she is right there. Hi, hi. So, here's some of my neighbors. So, with that being said, you know, Airbnb can be a pain in the ass for sure and I get that. It also brings in revenue to the city, which is something to think about. I mean, I know that maybe we feel that Dune City has enough revenue with the tourists that come through and, and so on and so forth, but I think it should really be addressed as a case by case. I can tell you, I called to do my due diligence to get a permit and to find out what my rights were and I was immediately shot down. And that made me really angry because I just spent a lot of money on a piece of property and whether it's long-term, term, or short-term, I, I'd like to at least have that conversation rather than someone coming to me and saying, you know, you can't do this. So, to date, I've, again, I've put a lot of money into that property and have fixed it up. That could have been sold to a developer and been developed and I have no intention to do that whatsoever. So, I hope that you'll consider on a case by case basis and consulting with their neighbors, that's very important. I mean, if someone's living there year-round like I am, I live in that house year-round, they should be, they should be, you know, talked to, they should be, you know, consulted about that because I don't think it's fair to just have someone come in and make a bunch of noise without letting them know that this is going on. I mean, they pay property taxes as well and they take care of their property. I'm sure most people here take care of their property also. So, I, I just hope that that's something that to be considered. I think there's two sides to the coin and both sides need to be heard.
And this will be your only chance to talk. So, thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Chris Clements?
Oh, you and my wife. Yeah, he was here last time, I was not. We bought property in Dune City in twenty-twenty and he just retired from the Air Force, so we finally got to move up here and we're just excited to subvert, you know, just be a part of the community, so we wanted to come and check it out. So, hi, guys.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you. David Dahlbeck?
Dahlbeck.
Dahlbeck.
Does he know me? I reside at five-four-one-three Buckskin Bob since nineteen ninety-four. And I use the word reside because that's what you do in a residential area. You live on your property. You don't make an income property out of it and ruin everybody else's quality of life. I've listened to you guys, I heard you just say, we're getting revenue. Well, I'll tell you what, we'll take up a collection and we'll pay the price for the permits. That's a joke, okay? This is just ruining our community. We have no children in our communities no more because anybody that passes away or something, these people with these LLCs are scooping these things up and they're making them the biggest cash cow. And I don't understand why you guys and the mayor would sit and let people do this in a residential area. How do you do that? How do you change the zoning laws? You know, I don't understand this. This is just totally BS and something's got to be done about it. I have several around my place. Unbelievable. They have no respect for anybody's property. They will be out there at midnight fighting in the streets. I've had to go down there and look and see what's going on. I just had to get up the other night and walk down the driveway at eleven-thirty because someone was down there flashing their flashlight around my trailer full of pools. And guess what? It was Airbnb. I've had them parked in my driveway sleeping drunk. You know, this is not what we need. This is ruining our community. There is no income, so don't give me that. There's no income from it. It doesn't do anything for the community that people that live there wouldn't do. So, don't do that to me. So, that, that, I'm just telling you. I live here too long. No, I don't want to hear from you on talk and I don't want to waive my three minutes to you. Very good. So, you guys need to just get rid of these people. I have a contractor scooping up every house on my block. There is nowhere that we can go and have our peace without these people coming, blocking the roads, backing into your driveways, pulling into your grass. If you go confront them, I've actually had three grown men pull their pants down and BA me and told me I had a nasty burr under my saddle. So, this stuff is BS. This is not what a community is. You, you want to rent your house out? Mister, you just bought the place on Clear Lake, it used to be the Hereford Place?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't even think you're in Dune City. I think that piece is out of it. So, you know, rent your place out.
I live on the property.
Rent it out, I don't care. Rent it out. Rent it out for thirty days or more because that's what short-term is. Thirty days, less than thirty days, short-term. This is ruining our community. We're not going to be able to pull out of it. I don't know what carrot you're getting dangled to sacrifice all these people's livelihood. It, it is appalling that you sit there and act like you're trying to figure out the avenue to go down when there should be no avenue at all. Because, can anybody tell me why you can have a business on a residential piece of property? I'm asking you, I'll ask you.
Okay, I'm just asking a question here, I didn't want to.
Why can you have a business on a residential piece of property? That system is for residents. It's for four, three, five people?
Well, that's an issue that we talked quite a bit about as a matter of fact.
I know.
And what we were trying to do was to find a balance between those people who have a home and, and want to rent it out to friends or relatives or...
I just said it, that's not rented out. These people are making these into cash cows.
I understand.
There's no laws that should be upstanding this. I own a residential piece of property, just like everybody else here. If you have a commercial piece of property, then you can rent it out, but these are residential pieces of property. I bought my house, my piece of property, I put it on there and it's a residential piece of property. It is not a business. And when you start with an LLC, the first thing, you look it up on your computer, what does it say? It's a business. So, you guys are blowing smoke up everybody's...
I, I...
Tailpipe here. So, this is what's going to happen. The next meeting, you see, there's going to be way more people here because a lot of my friends couldn't come. And I want to tell you, one of your talents may be holding the door open for City Hall for people to come in, but you, in my opinion, Mayor, you do not stand for the residents who reside in Dune City. And take a good look at my face because I'm going to be coming after your job.
Thank you, sir, for bringing up your attention. I can, I can attest to you that not everybody on this council is in agreement for the short-term rentals.
Sounds like it. You guys voted it in, you let it happen. I mean, basically, when you sleep with pigs, you're going to smell like a pig. So, you can say whatever you want, you're sitting up there.
Point of order, three minutes.
Thank you. Jeff?
In Marano.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah, hi. Jennifer Barano, eight-three-two-nine-six, Clear Lake Road. I'm definitely against this ordinance of two fifty-nine. I don't know enough about it. I need a whole lot more information. You guys shouldn't be voting on stuff when people like me that live right there don't have the information being sent to them. I need to know more. I had somebody come to my house, they let me come here. I have no idea about all this and glad I'm here. Short-term rentals, got a real good input for you guys. I used to have one up in Sierra, Truckee, California. I inherited a house from my parents. I couldn't afford two mortgages. I had an Airbnb, million-dollar house, beautiful woodwork, all custom craft. First year was great, second year went downhill. They weren't vetting the people. Parties, three people in my house thrashed, all my, all my silverware glasses broke and gone. Neighbors saying water pouring out of my garage. I couldn't handle the repairs anymore. The city, the town of Truckee is having a real major problem with Airbnbs and they're tracking them down. The whole council started, we got to do something here because they came in here and they took over everything. I had to get out of there. I sold my million-dollar home. LCC bought it, baby. They don't care. I, I had to do it just to save the house. I tried to save it for my family. I couldn't save it, had to sell it, but they don't vet the people properly. Two people rent the house, twenty people show up. And, and they have no control over that. They say, oh, I'm sorry. Sorrys don't cut it, man.
And it's happening here.
Yeah, and, and it's starting to happen here.
Right now.
I mean, look at other cities that already got their problems. Look at the city of Truckee in California and all these other cities. They're small like us. Truckee ain't a big place. It's a big tourist place. I had frigging five ski places in ten minutes in my house. Everybody wanted to rent the house. It was a moneymaker. They paid my mortgage, but the cost and, and the complaint from the neighbors, I felt sorry for them. And I even apologized to my neighbor when I looked because he just built a million-dollar home next to me. I said, I'm sorry, LCC bought it, they're just going to keep thrashing it. I couldn't save it for the family, so. More information on this and we're really starting to look at other cities that are small like us and see what they've done that might help you with your decisions. Thanks.
Troy, your name?
Uh, he had to leave. He was the gentleman sitting beside me, he had to leave.
He had to leave.
Did you throw him out?
Pardon?
How was Bernie, did you throw him out or?
No, I just, he, he didn't want to speak, but he had to get back to the house. It was a while that you were all away. He would hope to talk in the beginning of the meeting, but it didn't happen. Yeah, he's...
We're going to have more meetings.
Yeah, that's what they...
Before decisions are made. Does anyone else want to speak for three minutes? Yes.
Just like this gentleman here, we know nothing about these petitions and we really need to know what you're talking about here.
Sir, can you state your name for the record? That way we can make sure you're...
What'd she say?
Your name.
Your name. Rick Arnett, and I can't hear a word you're saying.
Thank you.
And half of us here are hard-hitting.
I'm going to say vote, thank you.
So, we just need more information to be able to vote because these renters got to quit wrecking our property. If, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a second?
We all have one to do the order.
Okay?
Yes.
Um, I, I've got a question for all of you. Lane County accepts taxes from everybody that's here. If you live in the city of Florence, you pay a tax to City of Florence, which allows the city of Florence to actually operate as a city. Dune City collects absolutely no tax from any of you on a property tax. How many of you are willing to step up and actually pay a property tax that will support a city that will actually be able to take care of the codes, take care of enforcement, take care of this stuff? Because you're, we're not talking peanuts, we're talking some, some tax money. Because if you want, if you want a water system, you want a sewer system, you want a law enforcement system, you want a code enforcement system, you want these things that you're all asking for, are you willing to pay for it? And if not, what's our options? What are our avenues? Do we become unincorporated? It's your decision.
For the revenue that you guys get from the Airbnb, don't you guys get a little kickback on it so you guys don't have to talk crazy?
There ain't nothing there.
Then why do it? If there's nothing there, why even bother doing it?
That's my question.
Ha, that's stupid. That's like a no-brainer.
If there's no carrot, why have the horse pulling so hard?
Okay, answer the question, you want to pay the tax?
Tax for what?
For rent, for rent of buildings here.
So, the city is run just fine. That has nothing to do with what they let happen. There's, there's nothing to do with taxes not being paid that's let these people infiltrate our town.
So, you have no means of enforcing this because there's nobody here to do it.
I don't know, you're giving permits. Who's giving the permits? Mayor, are you signing the permits for the Airbnb's? Who's giving the permits? Where's the hundred dollars going? Who's, who's collecting it? There, that's, that's letting them do it.
Well, we're also talking about people who haven't taken out permits.
Don't matter, you know, just...
Well, who's going to go out and...
Go threaten men like you did me before for not pumping my septic. You can put a lien on their property because you don't have no teeth. You can't collect money from people, but you just threaten them.
And how come these people that have been operating without a license haven't been fined?
Because they can't find nobody, ma'am. They have no judge. They can't get nothing.
Google.
They can put a lien on your property, but if you've got a trust or an LLC, LLC, they can't do nothing. Nothing.
Oh, there's a way. I found, I found out my LLC neighbor that was renting the house.
I'm going to get each of the councils, you know, opportunity to speak.
Aren't you going to read the letters that were sent in first? Let's, let's hear from these other people soon. No, no, where are my letters? On behalf of the staff, if you want.
Please, sir.
Okay, what I have on top is from Holly Collins. Is Holly Collins here? Okay. So, this says, "I'm officially requesting my letter to be read into the record under public correspondence in tonight's June twenty-first meeting. Dear Dune City Council, I'm a property owner in Westlake. I received detailed answers to several questions posed by City Administrator Mills regarding ordinance two fifty-nine's May public meeting. She confirmed public testimony has closed and that you are in deliberation." Her quote was, "I personally had hoped they would have left the public hearing open so additional testimony, whether in writing or in person, could be submitted into the record, but they chose to close the hearing, so now they deliberate and they cannot accept additional testimony. Perhaps if a lot of people came to the meeting and asked them to reopen the hearing or schedule a new one, they could do it, but it is not the procedure required under state law. Officially for the record, that is what I am asking you to do. It is clear in viewing, viewing the entire video that you will be holding a second reading on six-twenty-one, which conflicts with her response. The council cannot start deliberations on the document until they have had the first and second readings and the public hearing. After she told me that you are in deliberation, can you confirm that you are now deliberating before the second reading as she states, or are you first holding a second reading? I emailed on June thirteenth for clarity and received no response. Your website does not allow email access to any individual Dune City council member. Emails appear to go through first through step. I appreciate Ms. Mills' explanation of legal processes on how government works. I am familiar with public meeting processes as my husband is and has been a fire chief in both Oregon and Washington for fifteen years. When electing to embed a public testimony meeting within a regular meeting, you are required to, one, open and close with a certain manner to allow the public to know when they can speak, two, provide access to the final materials that you are being voted on, that are being voted on in advance, not a draft. Your own DC Charter, Chapter Eight, Sections thirty-four, Number Three, states just that. Neither of the requirements were met. A document you were reading from was not provided to the public. You acknowledge you're aware, you were still working on a variety of edits. You as a council were literally and figuratively not on the same page repeatedly throughout the meeting. The one, the... The one, the new one, which is longer and substantially different from the one last presented, the, I'm sorry, the new one, there's a, I think it's typo here. The new one is, is longer and substantially different from the one last presented to the public on, in 2021. Administrator Mills referred to notes that the public was unable to see that you were following along with. You also referred to a script that you were reading from. She refers to an item that had previously been removed but was added back a second time. What was that item? Can you tell us? A counselor asks why language stricken by planning had been put back into the info you were reviewing that we couldn't see. Administrator Mills stated that she determined it was put back to prevent possible road damage costs. An explanation that there were legal differences between 2021's planning commission document and staff's new edits doesn't explain the driveway apron comment. This was staff's personal opinion due to speculation of potential costs that could affect the city. How many other non-legal items were edited by staff that we can't see? I echo Counselor Hammond's question about whether planning was aware of these changes, to which Ms. Mills surprisingly replies, "We don't really need to do what planning came up with." Whose version of the document are you reading if you aren't reading the one that planning came up with that was presented to the citizens? The mayor opened the public testimony meeting, uh, and eventually closed it near the end. However, Ms. Mills' assistant on two occasions tells her that the mayor failed to close the public testimony. Ms. Mills suggests the testimony was closed to public comment when a citizen asked to speak. The citizen is told no and that she, Ms. Mills, needs to talk first and we will see how that document is. A counselor states that public meeting is still open to comment, asking that if we have time for two or three more questions, asking if we have time for two or three questions, and is told no. There was obvious confusion about whether the public comment period had been closed as the mayor had not closed it. He closed it near the end. The woman who had asked to speak wasn't recognized. For these reasons, regardless of whether you show on your end that the public comment has ended, as you are for deliberation phase, I believe that the required processes were not followed by the DC Charter, um, the state's requirements aside. Holding a public hearing where citizens are allowed to view all the documents being voted on is critical, especially since Administrator Mills stated that there will be no additional opportunities to hear from the public as you deliberate. It is crucial, one, that everyone who asks to be able to speak, speak. And two, provide copies of the actual document being, being voted on with all changes listed. The ordinance represents a massive undertaking. Choosing to read it by title only is easier for you in the short term. We as citizens however, have no assurance that you will go back and review any specific items at a later point. That feedback can't be given until a revised readable document is made publicly available as required per our DC Charter. Alternatively, send it back to planning so they can see the complete list of edits made by staff. Sincerely, Holly Collins, Westlake Property Owner. Next.
Uncle Adam? This letter is from Jeannie Jackson, 828-65 Hemlock Street, PO Box 55, Westlake, Oregon 97493, dated June 20th, 2023. Dear Dune City Councilors and Mayor Meyer, On May 17th, 2023, I took the time out of my schedule to attend your public meeting, which I had prepared for by getting my letter into you by 3:00 PM as required. I also signed in at the front desk to be able to speak in person to all of you and our audience of residents in order to share some of the particular issues that concern me within massive ordinance number 259 and Chapter 155 while I still can. Several other DC residents, mostly men of means, were allowed to speak at great length about their individual concerns regarding the many challenging issues contained with, within the gigantic and confusingly written proposed piece of city legislation, which was their right. I was not allowed the same courtesy, however, despite the freedom of speech afforded to me in the First Amendment of America's Bill of Rights. Iconic, or excuse me, ironic, since you begin each meeting with a patriotic recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, which concludes with liberty and justice for all. When, when the meeting, the lengthy meeting, I ventured to ask if I may speak now since the public portion had never been formally closed, I was essentially told by Administrator Mills and Counselor Hammond that I could not because they had to move on to more important matters. Ouch. The truth is, they had no desire to hear from me or worse yet, allow me to share my views about ordinance number 259 and Chapter 155 with other members of the community lest some of them actually choose to listen to me and question the passage on these messy pieces of the proposed city codes. Mr. Jonathan Anderson wrote a letter to your council but was still permitted to speak at length to you and the audience. Why not me? I was heartened by the brief statement Tina DeVries, if I say that correctly, a retired school teacher made in which she agreed with my suggestion that the changes DC claims to have made in a massive and confusing ordinance should be made available to all of us. Like me, she didn't believe it would become anywhere near costing the city a thousand dollars as Administrator Mills claimed, but it would have cost more effort. How can we, the citizens, be expected to follow what changes the city has made in ordinance number 259? If you will not share them openly with your residents? More importantly, how can a fair and honest discussion about ordinance number 259 and Chapter 155 even occur without a summary of all the sweeping changes in our zoning and development codes it may bring us? It appears that you are putting us all at great disadvantage in order to get to the finish line before we are even able to learn what the massive ordinance is about and debate the many confusing issues within it. I also agree with one of the many, I also agree with many of the things Mr. Snow, Peterson, Clemmons, and Anderson said as well. Dune City has a bad track record when it comes to being honest and open with its residents. Beginning with the list of lies, the original Dune City petitioners pulled Westlakeers to wheedle their way into the properties and lives. Choosing to ignore me and others who might disagree with the advancement of this poorly written and no forbearing ordinance will do nothing to help you degrepare DC's already questionable reputation. Why should we trust the city to be honest with us now? Your talk of codifying and passing the ordinance and then trying to fix it later sends shivers now sends shivers up our spines. We have grown weary of the city's many deceptions to our residents and we lack trust in you and follow through with such promises. Where is the citywide safe water system the early petitioners promised us over fifty years ago? To say nothing of a sewage system? What services has DC actually provided us with directly without outsourcing them to others? What use is there in to increase your funds at our expense without a clear picture of what will they will actually be used for? I also agree with the concerns Counselor Olson spoke of with respect to some of the proposed changes within 259 in zoning and development codes regarding such things as accessory buildings and the people's ability to use them as they need. I think that forcing residents to sell both properties, if they sell one, is wrong. Counselor Olson has a wife and three children and should have the right to pass one or both of his properties onto the other family members if he desires to. This, of course, should apply to the rest of us too. What right does DC have to dictate our individual property rights and zoning codes like this? Westlake is, is less of a town than it was before DC entered it. We have far fewer businesses and amenities now that we had, than what we had did when my grandparents, parents, and I were children. DC has made it much harder to even have a store or restaurant within the city's constant quest for costly permits, licenses, fees, and the like. Two of our once successful motel resorts are struggling, one of them which has actually shut down for now, and the third has mostly turned to a long-term room and/or kayak and boat rentals to survive. We can't even go to the local store without leaving Westlake to buy a loaf of bread or ice cream anymore. We no longer have a place to chat over a cup of coffee or tea in Westlake. There once was three. The businesses we do have are hoping to improve themselves, but they are getting little cooperation from DC without paying fee after fee. Past DC councilors, despite their early promises to us, also took down our beautiful Westlake sign and replaced it with a large imposing, commercial-looking ATV inviting one of their own after trying to take over our post office. Is it any wonder that our faith in your institution is so fragile? I was further disappointed to see that the comments I was able to make before the meeting ended that Administrator Mills seemed so offended by were not even included in the city's official minutes from the May 17th, 2023 meeting. Was this because she lost her cool? She was also very dismissive of Blaine County's laws and rights over DC and belittled the people of Westlake by asking how many of them were you back then anyway, fifty or seventy-five? The 1960 World Book Encyclopedia lists Westlake as having a population of 166 and it had greatly increased by the seventies when the petitioners came knocking on our doors. This upsets me because things I was saying were important, especially for the councilors and the residents at large. I am tired of being censored by Administrator Mills and others at DC City Hall. The last time I checked, the US Bill of Rights still affords us freedom of speech. After reviewing the video, I noted that the right before the meeting closed, Mayor Meyer did ask if anybody else wanted to speak, but having been silenced before, I did not think that applied to me. Still, I believe in your better natures and I see growing signs of them as late. You, the new group of city councilors, including Mr. Olson and Mrs. Stinson, now did not create the mess overnight. You inherited it. Innocence, we all did. Let us look at the higher angels now and build a place we can all be proud to live in, an honest and open place where we can all be heard, a place that includes us all. Sincerely, Jeannie Jackson.
I have, uh.
Thank you for reading.
I have a June 20th, uh, first 2023 message. Dear Dune City Council, I'm writing in order to share my concerns regarding the city's failure to conduct the May 17th, 2023 public hearing at ordinance number 259. According to the city hearing statutes and to adhere to Section 34, mode of enactment, Section 3 of Dune City Charter, please read my letter into the record of June 21st, 2023, Dune City Meeting. May 17th's public hearing, as conducted during the May 17th City Council meeting, was confusing and out of compliance with city statutes. City statutes require that the mayor formally announce the opening and closure of public hearing. The mayor announced the opening of the ordinance 259 public hearing, but didn't declare its con closure until just before the end of the council meeting. The city administrator conveyed at one point that the meeting's public hearing was over. Later, a city counselor stated that the public hearing was still open. At this point, several citizens had already left. The city has failed to make recent changes to ordinance number 259 available prior to May 17th read by title-only reading. Section 34, mode of enactment, number 3, requires that ordinance slated for reading by title only be ready for public inspection no later than one week before more formal reading. At this point, neither the council nor citizens have finished copy, have a finished copy of the most recent versions of ordinance number 259. The ordinance presented to the council for consideration for adoption at the May meeting was a working copy of the 2021 version of ordinance number 251, 259, that included seventeen extra pages and roughly sixty-eight changes. It is still the only version of ordinance number 259 available on the city's website. The read-by-title-only reading of ordinance number 259 was not, was not conducted according to the requirements of the Dune City Charter. And the newest version of the ordinance, as council members noted during May's meeting, still needed a lot of work. Ordinance number 259 should not have been presented to the council for adoption. Now is the time for the referral to the planning commission, not adoption. Respectfully, Geneva Jackson. There is an email and a letter here. The email is from Brandy Delbacke and it says, "Hello, I've written a letter that I would like to be read in tonight's meeting. The last page is a list of links to resources I've referenced in my letter and does not need to be read, but it can be shared with anyone who is interested in them at the meeting. I thought to include it because many people are quick to fact check these days. I wanted to mention that I did look at the Lincoln County article about their struggles with banning short-term rentals and they tried to ban them in unincorporated areas. Dune City is an incorporated city with clear property zones and Oregon considers a tenant as someone who occupies a property for two consecutive weeks in any six-month period. I've mentioned this in my letter since I'm sure people will talk about it and wanted to share some resources on it. Thank you, Brandy Delbacke." And this is a lengthy letter. I suggest that maybe I'll read the first page and then pass it on. There are three pages. Maybe you could pick up the second and third pages. So, from what I understand, there are several issues with trying to understand and identify the scope of the vacation rental problem. We know why citizens are complaining if we just listen, but there seems to be an issue with not knowing what we can do about it. It's hard to see how many vacation rentals there are and what their addresses are because the websites where these places are listed do not usually give the address in the listings. It is hard to look up data on Dune City in general because most of Dune City is actually listed as a Florence address with a zip code 97439. This makes it difficult to filter these websites for this information. Dune City could reach out to websites where vacation rentals are listed and ask how many are on their site in our area. Dune City may also want to send out an optional voluntary survey to residents of Dune City for data collection purposes. This survey would ask residents how many rentals are on their street or in their neighborhood and to list the addresses of those rentals and specify whether they are short-term rentals, long-term rentals, or unknown. The city may want to have these forms available at their office, long-term, to give citizens an anonymous way to report changes in their community and ensure the stability the local government can offer to a mostly residential town. In bold type, citizens should also file formal complaints, formal complaints with Dune City when they have issues with short-term rentals in their neighborhood so they can help find a solution, so they can identify where vacation rentals actually are. Next paragraph, "The other issue facing Dune City is that it is unclear what options that the city has to legally restrict the amount of vacation rentals in the area. This is probably why there's not been any resolution so far. One thing to consider when enforcing property use restrictions is how the property is zoned. Most properties are zoned for residential use in Dune City and those are the focus of this issue. Some vacation rentals are owned by LLCs, which are legal entity, which are illegal entities separate from the owner. The LLCs owning vacation rentals in Dune City are businesses that own property the owners do not reside in, that are operated for financial gain for the business. The property is likely listed as an investment or fixed asset on the financial statements of those LLCs. This would lead a person to believe that vacation rentals owned by LLCs are properties that no one resides in, unlike long-term rentals that usually have the same tenant for an extended period of time. This means the short-term renters are considered customers as opposed to tenants. In Oregon, a tenant is someone who stays as a guest at a property for more than two weeks in any six-month period. We have to ask ourselves as a community if we are okay with businesses owning homes and operating them as businesses while we ourselves cannot use our property as a brick and mortar storefront for our businesses. I do not feel comfortable with these businesses operating in a residential area unless they are renting the home long-term as a residence for a person to become a member of the community. To be clear, I'm not referring to those with properties zoned for business use. If you Google the definition of residential, the result is designed for people to live in occupied by private houses. Some ideas I have on how to least restrict the vacation rentals from eventually outnumbering residences in the area are listed below and each may be a way around issues other cities have with trying to comply, to completely ban short-term rentals while still providing some support for our community and preventing the issue from growing. The first point is look into raising the transient tax for Dune City. This is assessed to the customer and would deter them from staying here, therefore decreasing demand. Melissa, please pick it up there.
Second point, require a minimum stay of two weeks for renters, which would make renters considered tenants by Oregon law. Next point, ban short-term rentals in residential areas as per Oregon law defining residential areas, tenants versus guests, and what constitutes a rental becoming a business in a residential area. Next point, lower the cap of the number of vacation rentals to the number we are. Next point, lower the cap of the number of vacation rentals to the number we currently have registered for Dune City and do not issue any more licenses for more. Review complaints from residents about vacation rentals in their neighborhood and respond to the residents by letting them know whether the property is licensed or that the property is unlicensed and to please let Dune City know if they resume operations illegally. Next point, look into whether short-term rentals can be banned in residential areas of an incorporated city like in parts of Hawaii. Other areas in Oregon have ran into trouble with banning companies from operating. Hawaii seems to have gotten around this by allowing places to be rented on Airbnb but have made it clear that short-term rentals are anything under thirty day, thirty consecutive days of renting and have issued a fine of ten thousand dollars a day for any home rented in a residential area under the thirty consecutive day threshold. Next point, Eugene has rules as to where you cannot collect rent on dwellings that aren't homes, like trailers, vehicles, or campsites. This would not apply to businesses that are zoned for this, only to residential areas. Next point, set occupancy limits for how many renters are allowed in a short-term rental, maybe even by the size of the building. A creative solution would be to limit the number of vehicles and trailers for each rental. This number could be assessed when the license of a short-term rental is issued. Residents can take pictures when renters violate these rules and bring too many vehicles and flood the streets and their rental owner can be assessed a fine every time this happens. This will help ensure that the money is being invested into our roadways from the licenses to offset the amount of where the rentals are increasing on our roadways. Next point, Portland allows short-term rentals only on properties that the owner lives in long-term to find as two hundred and seventy days a year or more. The property's main use must be long-term occupancy by the owner. I want to point out that, yes, even Portland has stricter short-term rental laws than most other cities in Oregon. Last point, raise the price of the licenses to short, to rent short-term. Require them to be renewed each year. Price them to where short-term rentals are more expensive to operate. This makes short-term rentals less desirable and makes long-term rentals look more like more appealing option than it currently is. I've listed some cases below of other towns in Oregon and in Hawaii facing the same issue and how they have addressed it. These articles detail the challenges they face and I have summarized them below with a link to the article. Keep in mind that the reason things are not stricter than they are in these cities is not because the citizens don't feel this is a problem, but because local governments are facing challenges when finding creative ways to legally address the problem. The number of cities looking for solutions to this problem should tell you how big the issue is, especially in tourist towns. We need to address this now to ensure stability for residents amongst a growing touring, tourist industry that has been spurred by undoing a pandemic lockdown. Lincoln City did not run into trouble trying to ban, or excuse me, did run into trouble trying to ban short-term rentals, but they banned them in unincorporated areas, which is likely why the state is fighting them. Dune City is an incorporated city that was formed to keep the property in the area as residential properties.
A big issue with these vacation rentals is the destruction of Dune City and personal property. I won't go into detail at length, but about this, as I am sure my neighbors and others in the community know exactly what I'm referring to or this wouldn't be addressed today. They will likely share their own experiences. I will say that our roads are being heavily taxed and damaged by the flood of people coming down here every other night with large trucks, trailers, boats, RVs, and other large vehicles. These people do not know our roads, get stuck on our, on one-way, one-lane roads and cause damage trying to get out. This is the fault of the rental owners for misleading these people to believe they are renting a place with ample parking for several families to play in the dunes and camp. There are no, these are not campsites. They are homes in small communities that are carved out of the woods over time. Our neighborhood is not designed for this kind of traffic and the money for this wear is not put into our road. It is also scary for me to see people letting their children run around outside after dark when we've spotted wild cats out the night before and for people to walk in the roads in blind corners out here. This is bound to result in tragedy. If no one can educate these short-term rentals or control the traffic they bring to our neighborhood in some way. We are residential communities in a, we're a residential community in a tourist area. We have no obligation to provide lodging for tourists as much of the push for tourists to visit here comes from Florence and primarily benefits Florence, which has far more properties zoned for business than Dune City. There are many hotels, campgrounds, and even vacation rentals in Florence for tourists. We live in a world of limited resources and unlimited wants and needs. We need to look after our community and continue to provide residence for those who want to live and work here. Working-class citizens are required to support any type of community and we need to at least have options for people to move here. Buy a house on the market and get a loan and continue working here to pay for it. Without housing for more people to work here, we cannot provide for a large community. Tourists may not own property or pay taxes here, but they use our hospitals, grocery stores, gas stations, and other necessary resources without an increase of working, without an increase of working individuals to support this growth. We cannot prioritize the wants of visitors over the needs of the citizens and community. Dune City incorporated to serve this community and we should now reflect on why it incorporated in the first place with its mission statement and is what it is, its obligations are to serve the individuals who support it today. And then the next pages are just the links to references that he passed. Who wrote that?
Brandy Delbacke.
My daughter wrote that.
It was well-written.
Sounds like some good solutions.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, can I throw something out?
Yeah.
Why do we allow short-term rentals?
We don't.
You're taking money off them? Is that it?
If it's incorporated into residential, why do we allow?
I can, I can answer a couple. I'm not going to answer your question by giving you a couple insights.
Okay.
We get hotel motel tax from, that's part of our revenue, but that's not why we do it. The reason why we do it is there are some people who want to get some income off their houses and councillor Snow knows people that they rent their house once or twice a year to help pay their, pay their expenses. And that's really what the purpose that, that
That we're being sold out.
Who's asked me that? I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify through the clutter of the
Because you're making money.
That's what I had to do.
Let's do it.
I also want to point out that the licenses that we charge
If you took up a collection and put your hat down the street, the neighbors would fill the half with more money than you're making.
So the license fee that we charge is for the staff to investigate these people and make sure they have a license and they meet the requirements.
You're making a job for yourself.
I'm not making a job.
But you just said it.
I'm a volunteer for Christ's sake.
Well, yeah.
Okay, I'm not making a job.
I'm just saying it up.
I'm just trying to put sense to it.
Well, there's no sense to be made.
Well, I understand.
The neighbors would throw more money than you're making in your pocket to kick them out.
I'm not making any money.
Well, we're not, that's, Dune City's not gaining nothing. You're just selling us down the road.
I, I, you're part of Dune City and we're selling ourselves down the road then.
So can someone explain?
And you're not paying tax anyway, so.
Can someone explain why you don't get any percentage of our taxes that Lane County collects?
Because at, all the residents of Dune City have always denied Dune City any tax that's been posed. Has it been three times that they voted on this?
It's, that's
Okay, so in, in, in Dune City, you pay Lane County tax. Same thing they, same thing they pay in Florence. Okay, but Florence also assesses so that they can run business, a tax for the city of Florence. So they pay Lane County and city tax. So here in Dune City, you pay a Lane County tax and that's it. So there's no money to run business.
Our only source of revenue is road tax, cigarettes, and alcohol. And we get water fund, but that, the water fund money that we're getting is to administer the, 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 this part. We don't get any profit off it. The only, we don't make profit except for hotel, tourists, and roads, and that's not really profit.
Couldn't they make a distinction like this gentleman over here that has property? If it's, if it's an owner that owns a property, it's on the property, they could, you know, they're going to be able to regulate what goes on there and see what oversight.
That's the issue, the whole point of why we started to have this ordinance because we have nothing.
Yeah.
And just, just, just to make you aware, we have, we have had people come in and speak as passionately as you are on the side of allowing certain kinds of rentals, just as, as we've been talking about, people who, who would like to be able to rent out for a couple of weeks in order to, at various times, in order to help pay for their mortgage or whatever it may be. So
That's not being at all. When you're home and you reside there, you don't rent your house out and leave somebody go through your drawers. I mean, you, you sound like, you sound like you're important, but you speak stupidness. It's stupid. You don't rent your house out to help pay your bills. You move if you can't. But if you can't afford it, move. You don't rent your house out. It's not a rental. It's your home. It's a residence.
They have a different opinion than you.
Well, they, maybe they ought to buy somewhere that's not a residential property. You know, because that means you reside there. You don't farm it up because you need a new, a new car.
We have also people have vacation, they have vacation homes that live in Eugene and come here and, and
They keep them here.
I worked for them. I worked for them.
They don't let people come in and rent their houses to make extra money. They have enough money, they have two houses.
They, we're, I know you've called us stupid and you've called us pigs, but we are, we are citizens as, as you are, who are trying
You're not fighting for us.
Who are trying to get this right. We appreciate
You want to try to get it right and even there. We don't want them.
Let me speak for just a minute.
Actually, this gentleman at the last meeting talked on our behalf. This councillor said he's very concerned that we're going to have businesses next to residents, next to businesses. He was upset with that, so I think he is listening. He's concerned too.
We want to get this right and I know that a number of you here feel that we haven't yet and we greatly appreciate the fact that you've come to tell us that we haven't got it right yet. We're citizens like you are and we're trying to make it right.
You want to get it right. Yeah. But right means they're here. They're not, I, I just don't understand why this residential property gets lost in all this mumble jungle. I mean, I just don't understand this. You, you either reside on your property or you don't. So you can say you want to get it right, but that just falls on deaf ears when you're talking to people who don't want them in the neighborhood.
Okay, but we have other people
Yeah.
That have come in and spoken a different perspective.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure.
As we are to you tonight.
So, yeah.
We will be continuing this dialogue for sure. It's a, it's a, it's a difficult issue and I know that you feel it's simple. We have not seen it as simple and we have come up with a plan which now may need to be revised. It does need to be enforced. And one of the things that Rich spoke very well about is the fact that we do not have the resources to enforce the ordinances that we have because we don't have a city tax. And that makes it very difficult and the citizens have turned down a tax several times. We're trying to run a city on a shoestring. And I hear, we hear you all. And we will continue this dialogue and we will continue to think about this and try to make it work for everybody.
I guess, I guess maybe the question is, is it time to turn it over to Lane County and let Lane County deal with it?
It may be.
Then you can deal with the way that Lane County runs business.
Well, I didn't have a problem with that. We lived here for decades under Lane County.
That'd be bad.
Did not have a problem with it now. And, you know, I was really was trying to be helpful. I know you were upset with what I said at the last meeting and probably at the beginning of this one, but I'm really trying to help you understand how people here feel and why they don't want to give you tax money. They don't want to support you. They feel like they've been accused of tricking you. So you have to understand where we're all coming from too.
So part of the issue that we have is process. And like when we have a public hearing, we have, if you look at our minutes, we have things that are not on the agenda, you're given three minutes to talk. And it's actually, if you look at it, it's a maximum of twenty minutes for everybody, so we can get our business done. Well, that's not on the agenda. And then we had a public hearing, so one of the people wanted to talk. One, one of the people wanted to talk about the ordinance last week meeting, but it was not during the public hearing. It was during the opening meeting where things were not on the agenda. So they were told not to talk. And then when we got to the public hearing, which when we, when I reviewed it, I found out there was, it was a lot of inconsistency. We didn't know when it was starting. We didn't know when it was finished. But during the public hearing, that's when we heard everybody talk, but it wasn't closed and it was, there was a big confusion about it. And that's why you weren't talking, that, that when you asked me, because you said, you, the pronoun you said was you. And so you were talking to me directly. The only reason why I said you couldn't talk and it wasn't appropriate because it was at the minutes of the meeting. It wasn't during the public hearing. At least that's what I understood. Because I wanted to talk. I wanted, if you recall, I wanted everybody to talk. I didn't want to hear this thing you're reading.
I think you're a good and reasonable man, but the meeting was still open and I believe I was intentionally not called on because every man who came was able to speak at great length. I wasn't able to speak at all and I had signed up to speak. And I wanted to say more than what was just said in my letter. The whole point in coming was to ask you some important questions about ordinance, you know, two fifty-nine. But you didn't want to hear my message and I do, I am suspicious of the fact that you and Jamie
I want to hear your message and I want to hear everybody speak because at the time, you remember, we were going to read the whole ordinance instead of listening to the
But I was cut off and Jamie said, before I talk, let me read this. It's like, no, I'd like to ask my question. She didn't ever answer my question.
We certainly misunderstood something.
Yeah, we did.
So I think a big part of this problem is that you have these single-family homes that people aren't living in, that they're renting out as Airbnb in tight-knit communities. You have houses very close to one another. These people are living in those neighborhoods. They're saying, okay, we're going to make some money off this house. So we're going to rent it out. Let, you know, we're going to make an income off of this. And they can do whatever they want. It's not being policed. So that goes back to taxes, right? So you're not taking taxes. You can't police it. You don't have the means, the manpower. But I also feel like, you know, when you make a blanket statement and say that nobody should make money off of their property, what about people who raise cattle or orchards? I mean, honestly.
You can't raise cattle in a residential area. It has to be zoned for cattle. We don't have whole animals here in Dune City.
Well, that's not true because I do. And the property that I lived in was actually her for cattle.
That's right. That's why I thought you were exempt from Dune City because there's few pieces that got chosen exempt. Well, that one zone that was exempt and they did raise cattle there. So I'm sorry, but it was.
But just, just one, just to finish, I just think it shouldn't be a blanket statement. I think it should be really looked at and examined specifically for the neighborhood. No one wants to have people living next to them making a bunch of noise and keeping them up all night long and parking on their lawns or shining their ass to them. I mean, that's just insane.
You have been heard. You've all been heard.
Thanks.
But as you, if you have listened at all, not every one of you agrees with everything that's been said from you all. So that's what we're wrestling with, is trying to come up with the most reasonable solution to a, an unreasonable proposal in terms of some of your contention that, you know, no one should be allowed to be on your property or in your house for any reason.
If, if you recall, we actually fined somebody because of noise on your ordinance. But that, that whole, it was months and months of things coming. And that was one of the reasons why we need, we tried to get this, the short-term rental issue was just because of that, was trying to find a way to help these people who are having break roads, damage, up and down, all this stuff. And it, it's, it's a complex issue. It's not, if there's simple solutions, there aren't. We just think there are.
I'd like to volunteer. If you need somebody to go check if people got permits, I'm retired and I'd like, I'll volunteer for free. I'll go see who's got a permit. If they don't have permits, then we can do something to them. I'd love to help.
I'd like to share one of my favorite sayings. There are a hundred ways to do things and ninety-seven of them are right. And so
I'm sorry to interrupt. There was a gentleman that was wanting to speak and he keeps getting over, kind of talked about, so was that, did you see? over, kinda talked about, so, was that, just you all, was to make sure that person was... Okay, thank you.
I have one thing, if you don't have the money, or the tax money, or the people to enforce these rentals, then why, why do we have them? Get rid of them, and then you don't need the tax money or the people, and it's not an issue.
We do collect them, it's just hard to enforce them, because we don't have a justice of peace or a thing like that, we don't have money to do it, but we're asked to do it.
I was once told early on as a classroom teacher, if you can't enforce the rule, don't make it. And you need a few rules so you can enforce them.
And that applies to everybody, though? Would that apply to everybody?
What?
What you're suggesting?
No, I think if someone lives on the property and they're there and they want to rent their room out for six months or three months, that's fine.
Or a guest house, or whatever.
Yeah, Airbnb used to be, people showed up, you were in the house, you gave them a bed to sleep in, you served them breakfast, and off they went.
Yeah, they were owner-operator, they were there.
And I'm not letting anybody trash my property, that's why.
That's what 259 addresses, right?
No?
No.
How many of you guys actually looked back at the meeting online from last month? Did anybody that was not here actually view it? Thank you.
I always review them sometimes.
Do you guys recall the two ladies that raised their hands, that we talked about the zoning concerns, and that we were gonna be looking into making them, because of the problem that presented, that is in actual investigation, as we speak, it's been going on, because of a group that came out, they requested, and they asked, why is this not a commercial property? Because they are doing a business. And at that time, we brought up that, exactly, if they want to run, I can tell you that I spoke on it, if they want to run a commercial property, then it needs to be in a commercial zone. So we are making those changes, sir. We are looking at different things, we are trying to make this the nice place to live.
Keep it a nice place.
So we have new council members here, and I would ask for the due diligence of respect, of not calling names, because yes, we are all residents of Dune City. Whether you want to be in Dune City or not, I greatly value as a person of Dune City, because we are a town, and we are going to get our town back. That is the exact same reason why I ran. So if given the due diligence and the opportunity, because things cannot be fixed overnight, as we all know, as we're not teenagers, we know what we have experienced in our lives. Some things cannot be fixed overnight. Please give us the opportunity, time, but also volunteer to come and help. Please, we have volunteers on groups, Mayor, you can speak about that, any council member can speak about that. Volunteer time, because we're all volunteering, and we chose to volunteer because we want to represent you guys. But we are also residents of this town. We also want to join forces to make this the best place to live.
And I'd like to thank Pam for all she's been doing recently.
Absolutely.
Recently, yes.
I'd also like to say, if you would take the time to do some research, to find out how Lane County handles these types of issues and what they allow for Airbnbs and BRBOs and things of that nature, research that and get back to City Hall, and let us know what direction you wanna go. Because I think we're at the point in time where maybe the staff needs to look into the process of becoming an unincorporated city, and let you make the determination whether you want to be a city and pay some extra tax and actually be a city, or you want to become unincorporated and live by Lane County's rules and regulations.
We're running a town of Westlake where it used to be, and Mr. Johnson, I really appreciate what you said when you were talking about the fact that you've been trying hard to control this rental situation and address people's concerns, but, you know, there's equal concerns by us for many years now about all the ATVs that run the streets of Westlake, and nobody has really taken care of that either. We used to make multiple calls and just gave up, because you're not able to do anything about it, apparently, and the police doesn't, don't do anything about it, and, you know, that's why that sign is so disturbing. It's like, if you lived on my end of Westlake, well, I actually live just on the other side of this city hall, and I, the noise is horrible.
Well, that's what Rich says, we need a policeman.
People who own by those properties, I know somebody said, what a gorgeous piece of property, you know, the house right by Tahin, and it went on for sale, and it was a while before it sold, and I talked to two different people who said, you know why I wouldn't buy it? Oh my God, the damn ATVs, I can't hear myself think. But someone finally bought it, they came from California, maybe they're used to noise, maybe in a way, or something, but, you know, a lot of locals, it's too much for us.
Well, I will resort back to what councillor said, you know, we need help. You know, one thing that has been disturbing since we have taken office is, why do we don't have taxes to help us? How can we be effective in what we're doing if we don't have the financial backing?
I was trying to explain to you why I think people here feel that way.
Well, I could definitely understand, but I think we need to look back at it as a whole again, and as a community, and a town, and re-register that, look where it has happened since we haven't had it. We need to try and put another foot forward with the positive thinking that something is going to change.
I appreciate, you know, new people to the council and a new attitude, and, you know, I wish you all well.
I wanna hear it from you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm Palmer, I live down on Clear Lake Road, and I work for the city, and I have been told that we were out on a witch hunt, looking for violations, looking for people doing things wrong. We're not. When I go out and find people that I know are doing things they're not supposed to, or they have abandoned cars, or running cars, or just an eyesore of a place, Richard and I have gone and talked to them and said, or given them a notice, saying, Dune City is trying to clean up our area, we're trying to make it a better place, we want people to come here and visit, we want them to enjoy our peaceful community. I've worked real hard on trying to monitor these short-term rentals since I've gotten involved with it. The problem is, there is so many that people are just doing it, and until I get online and I find them, all of a sudden I recognize a place, or I recognize a lake, and you can't go on there and see what the address is, you just gotta try to find out. When I go by a job site, because I'm in permits, I've got four new builds that I'm really monitoring, because this is my first year here, and coming from a construction life and a farming life, I pay attention to what's going on. We've got new builds going on, I monitor how they're progressing so that they're not dragging out, so we don't have people living in their camp trailers on the lot for a year and a half or two years and not building.
I do. Right down on Buckskin Bob.
I know.
Dune City's letting them do it. Not one permit have I been seeing.
They did, but we are trying to remedy that.
Permanent structure built, 220, hooked up the sewer, no permits.
And I didn't know about it.
She's working on it.
But I'm working on it. When somebody brings something to my attention, I go dig and I find out about it. Mr. Arnett had a barn, or a shop, and as I'm going through files, I don't find a final inspection on it, so I got hold of him and asked him to call and get an inspection on it, and he did, and it was almost two years old.
You called me?
Yeah.
I don't remember that, really.
No, I sent you a letter, and then you came in to see me.
Oh, and the new building I had, yeah.
Yeah.
I worked a year and a half on some...
Building.
Yeah, I finally came down here and begged these guys to give me the final approval.
I got that note for you.
Thank you.
But there's so many things in the property files that, if you go to sell your property and everything's not in line, and somebody does a lane search, when I go pull the file, if there's not a final on a garage, or an accessory building that's over 200 square feet, or your power, or your, whatever, I get on the phone.
Amen.
Paul Patrick's building all these houses, he came in, and I said, Paul, I don't have a driveway permit for this one, this one, this one, I don't have a final electrical on this one. He sat down and wrote me out a check for $1,200 to bring them all up current, but nobody else had been going through anything and finding it. I've busted my butt since I came here last year to try to make it better, to try to make it better for everybody that owned their properties, to know their information is in there incorrect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm trying to deal with short-term rentals.
Good. And as you very well know, it is not something that can be fixed in the short term.
No.
So we are doing our best, and we appreciate everybody's input on it, whether it be positive or it be negative, we are responsible to hear you guys.
Can I ask which one is which? Do you?
If you ask a...
Which one's positive, which one's negative?
I look at all of the questions and try to find the positive in them because of the... Excuse me, can I finish talking before I may answer your question? I'm trying to answer every question before someone else answers the other one. I look at everything in a positive light, because I wanna make sure that we're seeing everything, and what one person perceives is not always what the next person perceives. So everybody's positive and everybody's negative is a matter of interpretation, it's the open communication that continues to resolve the problem.
I just wondered if my comments were positive or negative to you?
I, you know what, that is your...
That's my question to you.
It's neither, because I look at what you're saying, is that's your feeling, and that's okay.
Okay.
But I'm willing to rise above them, the negative.
You kind of said it like, one way was positive for them, and one way was negative for them, I just wondered which way it was.
Oh, I think it's the perception of the people who are speaking. Some people are speaking of something that they like, and some are speaking from a completely negative angle.
No, we're talking about not just Airbnb, is that positive?
I can't, I can't hear anybody, because we got too many people talking. Thank you.
Okay. My response to that is, from what you've all said tonight, if this was happening next door to me, I would be as upset as you are. And so, from that perspective, and that's, again, that's why we started down this road in the first place, was because we heard of some problems that were coming up. So, we don't want Dune City to turn into an Airbnb city, and I sure as heck don't want this happening next to me, and if my property, if the property next to mine goes up for sale and a corporation buys it, I would be sitting where you are, talking to the city council right now about how upset I am. So, I don't know how you wanna interpret that, but we, I think all of us feel that we cannot have this city turned into an Airbnb, and I'm using that term loosely, but a rental city. That's not what we want.
And it started before we had an opportunity to know that this was going on. Once we heard about it, we started deliberating, and I don't think we've reached a final verdict yet.
But your cell prevents for it.
We're still debating that, and looking at that.
I was gonna say, you can't have a...
This helps, having people come here, this is the most that I've seen here, having people come here and commenting on what we're doing and not doing is what is gonna make this city a better city. I love this city. I'm not here just because my wife has one more night without me buggered. I wanna make this a better city. And we need that input.
We need every single one of you helping us make that city better.
So I would like to say, in defense of the council, I would like to say that I've seen some progress toward the ends of what you're looking for. So that's just, that's just kind of a heads up that...
Well, I got like five of them on my...
Well, I know, I know, but things are, I think things are changing, I think, and I think they're starting, I think they're listening, at least starting to listen to people.
I'm just looking at my elderly neighbors and knowing they're gonna pass away, you know, one of these days, and then I'm just gonna have another one, and another one, and another one, and another one.
Well, hopefully that doesn't happen.
It's happening. There's a guy that's just bought up three in a row, and they're all gonna be Airbnbs. So, you know, that's what I'm looking at.
Well, hopefully they won't be.
No, you need to be positive, maybe they want me.
No, they are.
No, maybe they want me.
No, they are, he said so.
Well, they will say so.
I would, I would like to entertain a motion by the council to at least have staff look into what it takes to go through the process of unincorporation, and I would also like to entertain from the citizens, for you to go and research what it is that you will get out of Lane County, and then come back to us, and after we find out, you let us know what direction you want it to go.
I would also like to recommend that, since we are still a city and we are still a city council, that we put this rental issue at the top of our list of priorities, and I think, and Brandy Dalback's letter was indeed very impressive, and she left us with some really good ideas to consider. And I would like to make her suggestions and the topic of rentals high on the priority list at our next meeting.
We have a motion on the floor, but we didn't, we have to have a second to discuss. We haven't had a discussion, and that is, that's, one is unincorporation, the other thing is, so if we're gonna make a motion, that's one thing, but we can talk about it, but...
I was making a suggestion at this point, not a motion.
Well, I made a motion that the council have the staff look into the process of unincorporation and bring it back to us at next council.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion?
I, you know, I'm not in favor of unincorporation, because I think things will be worse. I wish we would be a city. I would also like to see this, I'd also like to see this zip code thing. I, it bothers the hell out of me to put in 4910 Darlings Loop, Florence, Oregon. If I do Dune City, they call me, they think, I would be happy with Westlake, too.
Well, there is no city in the Dunes.
This is, this is council comments right now.
And so, I wanna be a city, I wanna be a responsible city, because I think the city would better serve for water, roads, and all that stuff, and I don't wanna go to Lane County to get, I don't wanna go to Eugene to get a building permit, and things like that, so I would be a favor, but that's my discussion about it.
I'll make the comment that I agree with you wholeheartedly, but what I am trying to do here is prove a point. And my point is, we've got one of two directions to go here, and it's up to them to make the decision.
But information gathering will help.
And that's why I second the motion, because I wanna see the information out there.
Information is useful.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion, all those in favor of the motion.
Are you shutting down the process?
Motion passed.
Is what you said about the discussion, are you shutting down more discussion?
Are you talking to us, or to the back of the head?
Yes, yes.
To the back of my head.
No, I can't understand what you just said, Mayor Meyer, I weren't trying to...
It's hard to just make a motion, or a motion was made for the city to discern what it would be like to dissolve as a city, and just put ourselves in Lane County's paws.
It's information gathering.
Well, that's good, go ahead, but I just, this gentleman had now wanted to say something, maybe before the meetings are already done, or I will bring it up to you after we go, that's better.
So, when we discuss the motions and we have a discussion, it's not to the, it's not to the public, the public can observe, but this is an internal, we're past that, we had our comments, so...
Did we, however, and I don't wanna shut anybody off, did we close public comments, or could we entertain one more individual?
I think we need to entertain.
I would suggest we do. Sir?
Do you have something to say?
I'd like to hear from you.
One question I'd like to, it says here, property owners are to be charged $500 a day per violation of exceeding deadlines and are considered to be legally notified of violation and fees even if the violation letter is sent to the wrong name and address. How can you do that?
That is right now in your giant ordinance.
I know that, I was wondering, and his name and address for the record.
Oh, yes, that's, yeah, Rex Swampler. He had passed on talking earlier, but he was concerned about that, and asked me if I would bring it up, but I think he should bring it up.
Well, it is, it's in the ordinance, I saw it too.
I think you might be referring to, as the Lane community requirements for the mailing system, or is that what it's referring to?
I would like to answer that question.
I would like to answer that question. Oregon state law requires that cities mail to the name and address that is on the Lane County Assessor's website. Whatever's on their records, that's where we have to send it. And sometimes it's not, sometimes it's not correct. But we don't have control over that. The state requires that we do it that way, and-
You would charge people $500 a day?[1453.51]